The first quarter of our business is the fight of the league's please stand. All right, let the world reflect that all members are present with the exception of Vince Doudell. Was this meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was. This reminder to be recorded.
Welcome to all of our visitors. Is there any public comment to that? So then we get to move on to our highlight on youth. And first up is middle school competitive speech with coaches Amanda Langman and Christina Hearn Denzer. Welcome. Thanks for coming.
So our middle school competitive speech theme, which was previously known as forensics, the name has changed. I had an incredibly wonderful season. We embrace the Wisconsin Interscholastic Speech and Dramatic Arts Association like our state office. Their mission and vision is to enhance and refine communication skills to foster creativity and to share perspectives in a safe and supportive environment. To express their authentic selves and to grow from constructive feedback. And we really saw that happen this season. We were thrilled to have forty-two students in grades six through eight on our team competing. Of the seventeen schools in our Vista District Three, we have the largest middle level team. Pretty substantially, actually, by quite a bit. We have the largest team, which we're really proud of. And we're really grateful for the support to have three coaches this year. It helped immensely. With speech, we have to coach individually. It's not like we have all of them in a room at once. They're all doing different pieces. And so we have to meet with them one-on-one. And having three coaches really, really helped us feel their needs in a better way. So we appreciate that support. We have some students that identified on the climate survey that competitive speech is their only activity that they're in. That's a school sponsored one. And so we're really striving to have a lot of connections with our students. And it's a really critical program. We're super proud of it. So this year we competed in three different tournaments, the annual Panther Invitational that Mandy pretty much scheduled all herself. We host that each year. And then Level One and Level Two was hosted by Walden Woodbell. It was such a joy to see all of our students continue to grow in confidence and skills at each of these tournaments, using the feedback that they received from their adjudicators and then improve. Our students received top marks in all rounds of competition. We primarily brought home all excellence ribbons. SEC even did so well at Level One that the state did not send out enough ribbons for our team. And they had to mail us more. I was on the phone saying, please expedite those. These kids want the ribbons. That's not usually the case at high school. They're not really worried about the ribbons, but our students definitely were. They ventured out of their comfort zones. As you probably know, public speaking is number one fear of most adults. And here we have forty-two students in our middle school who are saying, we want to do that. We want to perform. And so tonight's performance in our highlight on youth is brought to you by two eighth graders who are committed leaders of our middle school speech program. John Carlo Crespo and Carter Paulson. Of the fifteen different categories that we offer our students, John Carlo and Carter are performing their play acting piece, which is difficult than a lot of the other categories because it requires memorization, blocking, pantomime, vocal and physical expression. They've earned top scores at all three of our competitions, which is super hard to do. And today they'll be performing Clark and Bruce by Bruce Kane.
Think of your favorite superheroes.
Green Lantern.
Superman.
Batman.
The Flash.
Wonder Woman.
Now imagine their life once all their superhero duties are behind them and they're living the life of retirement.
In this selection called Clark and Bruce by Bruce Kane, we get an inside look into the lives of Superman.
Clark.
And Bruce.
Batman.
Who are now living the life of retirement.
This is Clark and Bruce by Bruce Kane. Setting, beachside resort. This is the life.
No worries.
No responsibilities.
No getting up in the middle of the night.
Speak for yourself.
I mean, if I'm bad guys.
Oh, that? I gave that up years ago.
Man, I should have listened to you.
I kept telling you to get off the treadmill, but you just couldn't let it go.
I was too dedicated.
Oh, sure. You were dedicated. You just loved seeing that bat sitting in the sky. We're dying. Come save us.
Just tell us it didn't happen.
I didn't need one. All I had to do was whisper my name and I was tearing my clothes off in a phone booth.
At least he never caught you up for that.
I was gonna do six suits a week. My cost line was killing me, especially on my like two dollar reporter salary.
How did no one ever figure out who you were?
I had a disguise.
Horn-rimmed glasses. You call that a disguise? At least I had a call and talked in. Hello, husky boys.
Well, those days are gone and over.
Why did you give up when you did?
Once the X-ray vision started to go, I knew it wasn't long for the rest of it.
I would have given anything for X-ray vision.
Did have its advantages.
Anyways. I was lost these days.
Uh, oh, Lois. You better go.
Oh, I didn't know that, man. I'm sorry.
No, you're not.
I suppose you're right.
Never were her greatest fan.
She was a little too much. I'm a woman. Give me more. So what happened with her?
She said she needed to find herself.
Find herself? That's what she said? Find herself?
I had to hire a private detective. She had big bells very funny.
Never wasn't going to last. So what happened with her?
Married a CPA.
He must be one good accountant.
So sunscreen?
Thank you.
She said he might not be able to leave total buildings, but she was up to date on her taxes. What are taxes? Here's your new taxes. You ever met that girl?
Hmm, me no.
Ever married?
Nah, I always had my opportunities, but no siree.
So, well, all you had to do was go and show up with that bat suit.
Oh, yeah, ladies love that bat suit.
Why not? The shoulders, the pecs, washboard abs?
The whole package.
So, anyway, you never pop a question bothering?
Remember Diana Prince?
Princess Diana?
No, not Princess Diana. Diane Prince.
Wait, why's that name ring a bell? Wait, was that one that spun around and turned into Wonder Woman?
Woman. Wonder Woman.
A whole lot less exciting, but anyway, what was all that spinning about?
Hmm, she never said. I never asked. Underneath all the Amazonian bravado, she was a bundle of insecurities.
Really? I never would have guessed.
Oh, yeah. Needed a lot of reassurance. More than I could get to her, apparently.
Bad.
Every other minute it was, do you love me? Am I the only one? Do you want to spend the rest of your life with me?
The usual questions. What'd you say?
Ah, sure, whatever.
The usual answers.
It was almost cool free one night, but then she threw that lasso.
What's, what's a lasso?
Apparently it was her truth lasso.
What's a truth lasso?
She had this lasso.
Like a rodeo?
Like a rodeo.
Oh, man, I thought I was wrong. This keeps getting more interesting.
It does not get interesting. Once you got that thing around you, you cannot lie.
I know you're a smart man. And there's no way you really told the truth, right?
I had no other option.
No, no, I thought, I thought you knew that nothing destroys a relationship faster than the truth. It's not like the good old days anymore, is it?
You still think about those days?
I try not to, but every once in a while, I can trace a little memory.
I always think about those days when it was just you and I.
Flying through the sky. Oh, wait, you couldn't fly. Anyway, um, I think there's more superheroes than every corner of Starbucks these days.
Feel like I'm getting too old. Keep control from the other.
Wait, before you say that.
Who cares?
The superhero protection corps is America. Godwin, you just said that? They drag your butt into court. If you even do that right now, they'll do just that.
Those are old days. Lex Luthor would have those guys for lunch. Anyways, what happened to Lex?
Oh, I spent half my life trying to nail all that bunch of idiots from Wall Street. Took them down without breaking a sweat.
How did they do that?
Convinced him to take Zee Valley public. Couple of weeks later, they convinced, they did a hostile takeover and forced him out. I think he's living somewhere like hot place, like Arizona.
Certainly, right?
What happened to your guys? The Penguin Joker?
Well, I lost track of the Joker, although Penguin did try to friend me on Facebook, which does not make any sense because we're both not good in each other, so.
Wow. It's been good talking to you, Bruce.
Oh, yeah. It's been good talking.
I've gotta fly.
Go ahead, rub it in.
Oh, I don't mean fly, fly. I haven't done that, not since the vertigo.
Oh, that's.
No, I got a definitely flight at six, Bruce. It's gonna go catching up. Yeah, down me y'all.
What's a dabble?
Oh, it's like a teenager's thing right now. It's just like a handshake.
Oh, okay.
Some advice for you, Bruce. Don't look back. Keep your eye on the horizon. You live longer.
All right, I'll keep that in mind.
See you next year.
Same bad time, same bad channel. Eye on the horizon.
That was awesome. Loved it. How'd you guys come up with, what, like, how did you guys choose it?
I mean, the stern Denzer kind of like gave us a list of like things that they do. But we did end up choosing our own things, but.
Yeah, we were looking for like a humor piece, so we tried to do that because it's kind of one.
Well, you found it. It was awesome.
It was fun.
Awesome. You guys did a great job.
Yeah, nice job. Nice job.
All right, next up is middle school wrestling and Jean Johnson.
Gonna make us laugh. Hard to follow.
So for those of you who know me, you know, I like to attend a few SCC sporting events now and again. Truly watching students shine on their various interests and activities has always been a highlight for me. And I fully believe that the benefits of extracurricular activities, that they have on a student's character resiliency, their willingness to work with the team, and the list goes on and on. And so when I'm here tonight and what I would like to share with you tonight is what I feel is a truly remarkable extracurricular event for our middle school wrestlers this year. And I also kind of wanted to describe for you how this year's season is benefiting that group of young wrestlers. At the start of the year, our middle school coaches with the driving force theme around state decided we should participate in Wisconsin Middle School Team State Tournament. Not just anyone can enter into this tournament. You first need to get approved by a vetting process where they review your team and they look to see if you can fill all the weight classes. They also look to see how many state participants you've had at the youth level and how many of them have placed at youth level. Because they want to keep this tournament extremely competitive. And it was. We did get asked to join, and so we were one of the eighteen teams. Even as competitive as it is, our team went down and they battled really hard. They first destroyed the teams in their pool and they outscored their opponents in the first three duels, a hundred and fifty-two points to twenty-six. That propelled them to the semifinals match. It was a really tough match, came down to the last two matches. But the end result was we ended up taking fourth out of those eighteen teams. With there only being fourteen weight classes, the team is limited to twenty-five wrestlers. This means someone wanted a starting spot, they needed to earn it. It's not an easy thing to lose a wrestler's lot everybody and then acknowledge that you're lost. In addition, or eventually will probably make the team stronger. But that is a tough reality of wrestling and is one that is a lesson learned. That these kids worked hard and then they accepted the outcomes and they still did everything they could for the team, even though they had to take on a secondary role. And that's an extremely character building situation that they're facing at a really young age. One of the most unique qualities about this sport of wrestling is that it is both a team sport and an individual sport at the same time. It's often really hard for younger wrestlers to understand because all they know is that when they go out on the mat, it's just them and the other end. But really, the team aspect of the sport is where we see a lot of the really valuable lessons. For one, it makes everyone on the team valuable. Everyone on the team has a job that they can do that can contribute to the success of the team. And therefore it makes everyone extremely valuable to the team and makes everyone have a worth that they might not have. They know they go there and all they do is get beat, get beaten, get beat. That can be really hard on a kid, but if they know I can go out and maybe just not get beat as bad, that's extremely encouraging for them and uplifting for them. One of the reasons the coaches decided to try the Team State Tournament was to help reinforce the idea of the team. It's truly made a huge difference. There's really no way to describe how much this team fought for each other down there. They fought for every bonus point. They cheered on each victory. And for every match that didn't go well, the entire team was there to pick up the wrestler that was coming off the mat. Through their individual efforts, the team became stronger both on and off the mat. One of the matches that can maybe describe the strength and metal fortitude that this team has formed this season is the last match of the tournament. By all accounts, the last match of the tournament that we were down there for didn't matter. There is no way we could win the duel even if he would have pinned his opponent. But we sent out a wrestler knowing that he weighed in about fifteen pounds lighter than his opponent. As the match went on, he was getting beat. At one point, he was even put on his back. Now, knowing the match didn't matter, it would have been really easy for him to give in. He was getting beat. He was really out muscled and now he's on his back. But instead, he battled. And he didn't just battle for a little bit, but he fought off his back and off of a pin. He fought off a pin for at least thirty seconds before he worked his way off his back. If you have ever been pinned down, you will know that that is not an easy thing to do, especially if someone's a lot bigger than you are. So why did he do this if it didn't matter? Because he wasn't going to give in and he was fighting for his team. It was something to see, and I'm surprised it's not choking me up because every time I think about it, I get a little emotional. Seeing how this team, my bike coaches Derek Miller, Mark D'Landre, Ron Stade, Rob B C, and alumni Eric Collins and David Olson, represented themselves and SEC was truly remarkable. But there is more to note about this team than just the team's debate experience. On March eighth, the team went to the Northern Wisconsin Middle School Conference Tournament at Eau Claire North, and they brought home the team title. They scored a record-breaking six hundred and eighty-eight points. The second place team was a hundred and forty-four and a half points behind them. This past weekend, we had another record-breaking weekend. We have fifteen middle schoolers that wrestled their way out of the regionals and are going to participate in state this weekend. That is another record for us. We also had, it has to be a close to record-breaking year for participants because we were in between forty-five and fifty all year long, and I can't remember there being that many. So as you can see, they've had a really great year. But when I look back at their season, their victories don't come close to telling what I think is truly important out of all of this. It is the life lessons, the character and the work ethic that our middle school coaches are instilling in these young athletes. Our district vision is to be a school respected by others for excellence and achievement. On no less than five different occasions at the state tournament, I either had a fellow spectator ask me about our team because of how well we're performing, and there were even a couple of, where did this team come from? That I could hear throughout the stands as they watched and how our kids battled for themselves and for each other on the mat. During the season, we also had notes from conference athletic dreadgers commending our teams for their kindness, their manners, their politeness, and their character. To me, these things are the epitome of excellence and achievement. And as shown on more than one occasion, other schools, fans, and teams are looking at this team as one worthy of their respect. It's been an incredible season for our middle school wrestlers, and I was hoping to have some of them here to share their thoughts on Team State this season. But as many of those that were coming to top qualify for state, they're actually getting in an extra practice tonight. There's that darn work ethic again. But truly, on behalf of the coaching staff and the Sacred Central Wrestling Association, I'd like to thank you for continuing to support our participation in these types of events. Rest assured that these wrestlers are representing SEC extremely well both on and off the mat. We appreciate all of you and what you continue to do through the programs across the district. Keep your eye out for them in the next few years. It's gonna be a good ride. So, thank you.
All right, we can move on to number seven, comments by board members and superintendent. The referendum update.
We meet weekly. We have our structure meetings Wednesday mornings. So as of this morning, the update is things are ahead of schedule, actually, and then all the CTE additions, we call them areas H and J. The tile, for example, is up in all the bathrooms, the toilets or stall, the sinks. Then tile lots of tile in hallways and in areas. It looks great. Some cool accent walls in the resource areas where the big TVs and high-top tableers are gonna go. It's beautiful. It likes stuff you'd want in your home. Like, it's really nice. And then the spaces are just huge. Like, I don't know why, every time I walk in, but majority of the painting is done. There's nice blue accent stripes that really, and you know, to the spaces rather than just kind of the vanilla tans and lights. Ceiling grids are going in. And then starting next month, if it first, which is just a couple of weeks away, they're gonna be putting into chemistry and flooring. So lots of, lots of flooring, obviously. Some VCT or luxury vinyl tile. And then obviously carpeting and some areas. But yeah, it's looking great. And I have a scheduled outstanding work. Couldn't be more happy with Markit Johnson, Walden, and all the stuffs.
Another communication, just really diligence.
Yeah.
Every single weekend day.
So speaking of that, the next meeting, maybe the next board meeting, Erica, you want to throw a video?
Yeah, so we would like, you know, we should go and tour it. And so we're thinking for the next board meeting that, and they're available. So like, it usually takes us an hour to kind of, you know, look through it. And so we could meet at the high school at five-thirty before the next board meeting and the hour longer. It might even be longer, but because I don't know if you've been in the virtual part of it. So we'll do that and over to the big fig rooms. So does that work for everyone, five-thirty?
It's working for me. Kelly, we'll send the invite then to everybody's. Start at the high school.
Yep.
Yep. At the front office. They'll have all the, you gotta wear hard hat.
So, I mean, I will let Erica in right now? Okay. April seventeenth, is that? All right, now we can move on to scheduled presentation by guests and staff members. And on the docket is introduction of the 2024 springy election school board candidates. So myself, Erica Herring, Anant Chala, Brad Wester, and Josh Pettit.
And FYI, is the order that each of four candidates are going to be on the ballot. Random drawing was done. Kelly did that, I don't know, three weeks ago. Yeah, to send to the county. So FYI, this order will be on the ballot too.
All right, so I will go first. I'll introduce myself. I'm Erica Herring, and I'm seeking reelection because I love this district and I love giving back. I've lived in the district for twenty-five years, along with my husband, who was born and raised here and graduated from St. Croix Central. Owen is our youngest and he's a junior here at St. Croix Central, and our oldest two graduated from St. Croix Central and work and live in the district. I grew up on a small family farm in Maiden Rock, Wisconsin. I went to school in Palm City and attended to the College of St. Catherine and graduated there with a degree in occupational therapy. I worked in the local school district for fifteen years. But then in 2014, Matt and I decided to buy Marco Septic. So that took me away from that job, which I loved, but also loved Marco Septic. And we run that with our sons and they all work for us. And we've always been proud sponsors of Panther Activities. There are a million little things that I love about this district, and I think it's the greatest place to be. I enjoy being a liaison between the community staff and school board and enjoy listening, understanding and sharing visions and working together to provide the best possible education for every student to prepare them for their world. I tell our boys every single morning when they were going to school, and I still do it with Owen. I said, you go to the best school in America, and I truly believe that. There's no place I'd rather have them be. So with that, I just, I really think that this is the best place to be. And I think that when we all work together, we can create that for our staff and our students, our families, parents, that when they walk through the doors, that they think there's no place that I'd rather have my children go to school. I've served on the board for three years and I've been president for two. I've attended weekly referendum meetings, legal finance and compensation meetings. I've attended local, state, national conventions to help further my knowledge in effective school board leadership. I believe that the school board needs to be fiscally responsible, visionary, and collaborate with our communities to gather facts and make logical decisions. I hope that my thoughtful leadership will make a difference for years to come. And I believe that I'm open-minded and visionary. I'm incredibly grateful to be a small part of this incredible school district because amazing things are happening here. Thanks. Okay, so now we have an act.
Hello, everyone. I think I know most people in this room. My name is Anant Chala. I grew up here in the district. Was as well previously, and then back home. I'm a father with my parents, as well as my brother and his wife. After I graduated, I went to Madison for dairy science and life science communications. Finished that degree and worked at Michigan for a while and then returned to get my masters in dairy science at Madison again. While I was going through my masters and more in the schooling, I said, no, just not quite as passionate about the science end as I am about the fly end. So my husband and I were engaged at the time and we started talking and said, you know, if we don't give this business ownership thing a chance now while we're young in our career, we're gonna get really comfortable and never do it. So we moved back and said, let's give it a year. And once we said, we're gonna give it a shot, my uncle said, that's really good. I'd like something new to be with my life. So it was a great business transition. And I guess we haven't left and looked back since we gave it a shot. So we're here about twelve years later. We have three kids in the district, so my oldest is in fifth grade and my youngest is in kindergarten this year. My kids couldn't be much more different. And I think that's one thing that I think I've realized as I've been a parent is just how unique each kid's educational needs are because of their personalities. Growing up, I think, you know, there's always a preconceived notions, why people behave the way they do, or, you know, there's just people are gonna succeed or not succeed due to these factors, which is very true. But I don't think I realized how big of a factor the school district and the outpouring of love that teachers and everyone else gives to a kid really is impactful. So I guess why did I decide to run for school board? Probably started when we got a little postcard in the mail and it looked like we were looking at some tech ad actions. And I went, ooh, I really like getting more tech ed in the schools. So I put my name down, filled out a survey, and it turns out I was really signing up for much more and starting to serve on a referendum committee, which was great. And while I was going through that process, it really drummed up a lot of passion in me to say, I want to be involved. I want to know more. I want a seat at the table to have an opinion and not just an opinion that's spoken out in public where there's not going to be an action from it, but somewhere where it can have an impact. Because the further my kids get, and when I think back without realizing at the time through my own education, the more impact I realize individual teachers and programs and everything else has on a kid's success. You know, I think Jean said it really good. She said the victory isn't really in the winner, the losses. Well, education isn't in the diploma you receive. It's in everything you learn while you're here. So that's some of the reasons I've decided to run.
All right, next up, Brad Wester.
Good evening. My name's Brad Wester. I moved into St. Croix Central in Hammond area in 2006 with my wife Heather. We, we built our original home in Hudson and realized fairly quickly that we, we were not larger community people. We we built our original home in Hudson and realized fairly quickly that we we were not larger community people. And we started looking east and came into Hammond without much knowledge of Hammond, other than, you know, some football knowledge of them in the in the state years. So we obviously built our house, we raised three kids in this community, my oldest son Carter graduated three years ago and now attends UW Stevens Point with a wildlife biology degree, and he's got one year left. My middle son Kayden is a senior currently at SCC, and extra will be attending UW Claire to go into the education field. And he will also be playing college football. My youngest son is in eighth grade, so as Jean was talking about the wrestling, he's luckily enough to be one of those child. And, you know, as Jean said, what a cool experience, lot of growth. So just overall, the experience that we've received, the family, the friends through SCC has been so positive. My wife Heather currently works at the high school as a secretary, she started off at the elementary and then just this year moved over to the high school. So, you know, many reasons why I'm passionate about this school, I mentioned my son Kayden is going to Claire. His goal is to come back to SCC, you know, in four years and be a teacher and a coach here, so that speaks in terms of how much we like the school. Let's see, what else? A lot of my friends and family are teachers. My sister is a teacher in Madison, twenty-eight years. And as you guys know, Madison is fairly large, and I get to listen to her every morning and talk about the difficulties of being a teacher extremely, especially in Madison, Wisconsin. So, you know, I'm very passionate about the the job, the friends that I have in the business. I've been involved in the last couple of referendums from the community side. You know, very active with with what's going on in our facilities. I, a little background, I work for a company called Premium Waters, I'm going on my twenty-fourth year. They're they're, as Marco is a big sponsor of SCC School and Sports. It's just speaks for the community, it speaks for the people that we have working at this school, you know, why I wanna be involved every way I can. I did run for the school board a few years back, it wasn't through the vote process, it was a replacement spot, I did not make it through. So when that opportunity came this time, I wanted to run again. You know, part of the reason also for running for the school board is, you know, it's it's the experience that I have in the in my job, I serve currently on on two different board of directors, both with Premium Waters and the International Bottle Water Association. So International Bottle Water Association serves for over one hundred and fifty different water companies across the United States and Europe. So we're really active on the political side of bottled water. You know, we're we're a voice of nine for, like I said, one hundred and fifty different companies. We attend Washington DC every year and lobby for different bottled water laws, which is a great experience and a, well, really a life-changing experience. I have a lot of interest in politics and and that may be the path someday that I go. But right now with family, friends, the opportunity that lies here, that is my focus. You know, other than that, just, you know, thanks for the opportunity, I'm excited to be in the room today to tell you guys why I should be on the school board. And just, you know, look forward to the vote on April second, and and, like I said, no matter what happens in this is, I'll always be involved in this community, whether it's on the board or, you know, as a as a citizen, so, you know, appreciate the time.
Josh Pettit, running for the reelection, been here for three years. My wife Karen and I have lived in Roberts for sixteen years, we have three boys, two of them already graduated from SCC, they're in college now, a junior and freshman. My youngest boy is an eighth grader, I originally ran for the board to try to, you know, help the the school, the the community. I coached all three boys in multiple sports, I still do. And I'm just trying to find another way to kind of do my part or our part, my wife and I, to try to help out the school district. I've said many times and many places that we have some of the best faculty, staff, and teachers and administrators around. We also have some of the best students around, and I, you know, like Erica said, I I truly believe that too, and not just saying that. I wanted to make sure that we did everything possible to help the teachers and staff succeed, so in turn that they can help our kids here be successful, not just in the classroom, but also in life. I'm running again because I think, like as a board, and no matter who we have, I think it'll continue, but I just feel like we have a good thing going together with the referendum and stuff, and things that came from that, and just trying to make the school the best in the area that we possibly can, just wanted to continue doing that. I also believe that our students, even with the great staff, they'll see and face so many new things and new ideas, I think both good and bad. And I think like a board with ours, I think we have the, we can hope to continue to grow and give a good education, also keep our SCC values that we have. But I, yeah, I hope everyone has seen the positive things that we've done so far, and I'm asking again for the vote on April second, and hopefully continue to work for SCC community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks all of you. Yeah, I just wanna take that credit and thank all four candidates for stepping up and it truly is community service. And I know all four of you and don't have any axe to grind, big personal agendas, you know, truly are coming from a, you know, point of service, so. You know, you've seen school board meetings in other districts and stuff, and they can be volatile, and it can be, you know, but, so it's a it's a tough job. And I say this to everyone, sitting members and folks that are running. But it's also very rewarding, right, because for all the reasons you just talked about, and just the highlight in youth, you know, you see it, that's the stuff that's happening every day, so. Thank you for stepping up and and being vulnerable and throwing your throwing your name in the hat.
We can move on to number nine, financial reports, and Lance is gonna read since our treasurer.
All right, Citizen State Bank checking two million, three hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. Citizen Bank Money Market, one hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-three cents. Fund forty-six, fifty-six dollars, sixty-seven cents, suicide prevention, five thousand, seventeen dollars and seventy-eight cents. The American Deposit Debit Service, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars, ninety-six cents. The forty-nine A referendum, four million, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars, fifty-six cents. The D eleven referendum fund, three mil, or three million, six hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and fifteen cents. D twelve debt service, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and two dollars and thirty-one cents for a total account balance of eleven million, four hundred, forty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-three cents.
Jeff made the motion, Dave second, is there any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? So then we have the consideration of the consent agenda. There are no curricular modifications at this time? All right, so Dave made the motion, Derek second, is there any discussion on items? All in favor? Motion carries, next is eleven.
How long has Jackie Newell been? Yeah, yeah, she was.
I told Pete that I wasn't gonna approve that. You just got tricked into it. I said, I'm not gonna approve that, I said, good, I'll show up at ten o'clock next year and be out at two. What are you gonna do, fire Pete?
This guy's been here for a long time.
Yeah, I didn't wanna approve his either.
Yeah, he came in the middle of one of the years, we had a big class, and he was fighting in the middle of the year.
We approved Gary Larson last board meeting too, and he's been for a long time, and Craig. All right, so now we can move on to administrative reports, we have student enrollment update.
This month, one thousand, five hundred and ninety-four students in seats. We have thirty-nine of our resident students, full-time virtual, one hundred and forty of them are taking part-time virtual courses. And then we have in our virtual charter school that our students open enrolled from outside our district boundaries. We have three hundred and twenty-one of those students enrolled as of the time of this report. For instance, lunch rate held steady at twenty-five point three six.
Now we can move on to Pete.
Yeah, so the high school transition plan, speaking of Pete's retirement. This morning, I met with the high school staff and informed them that I'll be naming Brian Johnson as our next high school principal. And again, per for standard operating procedures, we can transfer between principal positions, like we've done a couple of times in the past, so pleased to promote Brian to that position. And like I told the staff this morning, Brian possesses all the attributes we look for in our SCC values and our culture and humility and work ethic, works hard, works smart, and I know he loves this, when you when you say good things about it. But speaking of humility, and yeah, he he's, you know, been preparing for this ever since, you know, we hired him away from Hudson, and he's he's been interviewing and preparing for this and proving himself every day, so really excited to continue a nice, smooth transition. The high school staff really supports that as well. I also mentioned the legacy that Pete leaves, and Pete's probably the only principal in the state that's been a principal of all three buildings, all three levels.
Yeah, he's the only one that Owen has ever had, so.
Elementary, middle, and high, right, three very different student populations and demographics, and outstanding in all of them, really transformed, I think, all those schools and cultures. Additionally, each one of the assistant principals he worked with, Shelley at the elementary, Chance, the middle school, and now Brian, he groomed, you know, he he mentored them, and it was truly a co-principals with them and prepared them for the role, so he not only was a principal at three, he mentored the three assistant principals to become the future principal, so that's that's quite a legacy, and that's a pretty remarkable thing to do that he's done, so. With that, Brian's position will be open, and obviously, what's next with that, people want to know, so. We're just to prove Pete's resignation, so tomorrow morning, we'll post that, we'll start internally with posting it, because we have qualified candidates in district. We're gonna start there and see what we get for applications and go from there and and look at getting that hired person hired as soon as possible, involve the high school guiding coalition, formerly known as the building leadership team, in in interviews and admin in the interviews, also coupled administrative assistants in the office that will work closely with that position will be on the interview committee, so. Look at getting that hired soon, hopefully, if we go with internal candidates, get a good pool, we'll we'll start interviewing week, first week in April, actually. So, any questions with that?
I know that your leadership team over the summer does planning, it'd be really nice if this new person, either internal or external, could be a part of that, even though their contract may not start until July first.
We've done that in the past with every new person, for instance, Brian, you know, came, we call it sale, the School Administrators Institute for Leadership, it was a formal thing through OSUN for two years, and then we've just continued it every year of the admin retreat, where, yeah, we kind of look back on the year, you know, and looked at our goals and how we achieved them and the things we did well, things maybe we need to do better, and then we really spent a lot of time on preparing, August PD specifically, we have all that planned out on both five days of August, new staff orientation, and then the year-long PD calendar, we have planned out as well by the time we we leave our retreat. So, yeah, we always invite the new person, that will be the plan as well.
Congrats.
I didn't want to approve either, just so you know.
Did stump him on any interview questions? Ryan's interview? Nope, didn't stump him on any question for four and a half years or whatever.
All right, thanks for that update. Okay, so we can move on to key work of the school board, there was one that was submitted late later yesterday or last night, so we're gonna read those tomorrow. Or not tomorrow, the next meeting, so we don't have any of those to read today, but we'll go on to the core agenda items. And first one is consideration of approval of food service contract, starting July first to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. And Jen's joining us via online, hi Jen.
Hi, good evening, can you guys hear me? So, food service contract, if you remember back in January, we talked about this briefly, how every five years we are required by DPI to go out and accept bids for a new food service contract vendor. And so mid, the middle of January, we met with three vendors, one of them being Chartwells and two other vendors, and went through all three of our buildings and the kitchens and gave them a tour and everything. And I believe bids were due on January thirty-first, so right at the end of the month. To the two other companies, I received notification from them that they would not be able to submit a competitive bid to us, but we did receive the bid from Chartwells. So what you see as the exhibit for for this agenda item is just the financial summary that they submitted with their proposal, which basically shows a break even for this coming year. And of course, I know Sandy is there tonight too to answer any questions you might have, but, you know, we've been with Chartwells long-term, and they've been a great partner for us, and, you know, right now, our focus isn't on adding money to our fund balance, so, you know, we're trying to keep those meal rates as low as we can for the families. So our recommendation would be to approve Chartwells for our next five-year contract for our food service vendor. I do have the binder sitting there too, that's the official bid document that was submitted. So if anyone did wanna look through that, it does have a lot of information in there, and you're certainly welcome to do that.
You love your service, and my kids love your food, and I love to see everything you're doing on Facebook with the kid, you know, no, for sure the high school, because I, you know.
Get your newsletter.
Stacy, it's been so wonderful to have a toddler, be at my, all my. Um, Stacey, it's been so wonderful to have her talk to me, be at my, all my events. And, uh, it just allows me to just really engage with the kids. Mood Boost with our big February and, and element into March. I was in France, too.
She's not afraid of public speaking.
So, um, it's been great, you know, when they rolled out, when Chartwells rolled out, Mood Boost and Discovery Kitchen was just like, oh my God, another thing to do. But it has been wonderful to be with the kids during lunch. And Mood Boost at the elementary school, I just never thought it would, it would work as well. Um, it was a little hard on the staff at the beginning, but at the end, but now the kids see me and they, they're like, oh, we're tasting today. What did you bring today? And with Mood Boosts, they would get a sticker. Even, even like, we started out with the preschool and the kindergartners. If they even chose the odd-looking vegetable or salad and put it on their tray, they got a sticker. So then I would just move up and I hadn't ordered enough of the cards. So the recipe cards had whatever we were, we were serving and had a recipe back. So they got to taste it and then they got to take the card home to mom and dad. And I had, I, I attended the Dr. Seuss meals at the elementary school and I still have my, we had Mood Boost that day. And so I still have my uniform and my Mood Boost. And my mother looked at me and she goes, so you're the one? I'm like, yeah, I am. And she's like, I gotta tell you. He comes home and talks about lunch. He'd never talked about lunch, but he goes, those little cards, we've made every single recipe. It's a six-week program. And Shelley has also had conversations with other parents. So it works, it's wonderful. I brought it over to middle school. Now they don't even like, they'll just walk by and just kinda like look at me and, you know, don't wanna taste anything or touch anything. But now they're ready to engage and they're ready to try things like beets, you know, beets in a salad. So it's been very fun. I appreciate, you know, the, um, the opportunity to get, uh, another shot at this. And, um, we have more to come, more to come.
I can't believe the middle school kids would ask the shadow there.
Yeah, they didn't wanna come out of their comfort zones.
Well, the best feature I had is I would have like a display on the Mood Boost, um, uh, backdrop. And I had some broccoli. By the end of the day, they had chewed off the broccoli. The kids just passing by the table on their way to back to their class. It was just like a rabbit had run after them. That was so cute, um.
I think that's adorable.
It, it's adorable, it is adorable, it is adorable. So now my focus in April is going to be student choice. So I'm naming John Cackman my ambassador to food service at the high school. He doesn't know yet, it's gonna be in the newsletter. Because he started the kids', um, what's your five best? So the, the, the week that we came, um, right before spring break, we did their five favorite, um, meals. We're gonna do it at the middle school. And I wanna bring it to the elementary school too, when I engage the third graders. The fourth grader that aren't on the field up to play sixty kids, um, are very down in mouth. When, when, uh, the two kids from each of the classes get to, to spend time with me, they spend twenty minutes once a month and they make a new kinda snack. And so we'll see, we'll see how it goes. But I thank you and I appreciate it.
It's interesting how impactful the lunch ladies are. My kids, um, my grandson goes to a, a home daycare preschool. And on Thursdays, they have lunch and she always serves beets. And here's a three-year-old demanding that I'm on top of have beets at our house.
Yes, and they're afraid. And cause they, you know, kids are so much more, um, aware, they go out to dinner a lot, they see it on the television, like those few up to play sixty kids. They think they're on like that show, like with Gordon Ramsay, you know, they wanna get this on television and they wanna do more. I, I've talked to Shelley a couple of times because, um, some schools in Chartwells will have like a cook-off at the elementary school. And like, everybody gathers in the gym, you know, it's all set up and there's like maybe three or four contestants. And they work as a team to try and make something. And, um, but they are, they, you know, they are just so much more aware about what's going on and healthier being too.
Cool.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Need a motion to approve.
Alright, so Derek made the motion and Jabber's second. Any discussion? All in favor? Post? Motion carries. Um, moving on to consideration of approval of Fund Forty-Six Capital Improvement Plan.
Okay, so your Exhibit thirteen B is, that again is something we're required to do annually because we have a Fund Forty-Six Capital Improvement Fund. That is the fund that has the fifty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents in there. Um, so what I usually do is I go through and just update this document. So everything that's listed in or highlighted in yellow is a change from last year. Uh, most of them are just, it's updating the year because we did not replace it in the past year. And then the estimated cost is also updated due to inflation. So if you go through, you can see all the different items that are on the docket too that, you know, we'll need to be looking at to be replaced. Especially like maybe the carpeted areas and stuff like that, um, we'll be looking at. And then at the very end of the document, the last page is a summary of all the costs by year. So it's just basically a requirement when we have a Fund Forty-Six that we put this together. We can change it at any time, but we have to approve it at least yearly. Any questions on that?
So I know Jen, you know, some of the, um, board development meetings and such, this has come up, you know, and, and, uh, I know at some point the board knows they better invest and put more than fifty dollars into the fund. Now, it hasn't been as important, obviously, because of the referendums, uh, that trust a lot, uh, of those issues. But they still exist and we still have a plan for twenty years. So I don't know if there's any thoughts in, in how to proceed if, and decide and prioritize how much money could be, could be put into that, you know, fund. Obviously, it'll vary every year, but I don't know if the board feels the same way, like we need to put something in there, something more than fifty.
I think our priority has been to make sure we have solid fund balance presented because that impacts our bond rating and our audit reports. So, you know, we haven't, really haven't had much extra money. I mean, you don't spend it, the state doesn't give it to you the next year. So you, you, you can't, if you put money in here, then it's in there forever. You can't really take it back out for operational purposes. So I'm okay with what we're doing, understanding that in twenty years, we're gonna have multiple referendums that. I mean, when I came on the board, we had a huge maintenance budget and every year, you know, as revenue limits, we chopped that to put money into teachers. And, you know, at the end of the day, we had like fifty grand a year for forty million dollars of assets. I mean, it just didn't make sense, but the priority has always been people before property.
Definitely.
And so we've got to make no apologies about it.
Counselors, psychologists.
One of the other focuses we've had over the past few years is paying down our local retirement benefit too. And as you saw from the consent agenda tonight, we had several more highly experienced teachers now that are retiring and will receive a local retirement benefit. So at the end of the year, I think it's more beneficial at this point in time if there are funds available to pay some of that down instead of putting it in the Fund Forty-Six. I mean, hopefully at some point, we can, you know, be able to fund that a little better. But we have it, we've met the five-year requirement. And so it's just, it's really up to us and the board as to how we wanna proceed.
I mean, are there, are there anything on this list that would classify as high-risk? I mean, cause a lot of it is cosmetic-ish.
No, yeah, the building envelope roofs and windows and all that is taken care of. You know, except the, even some of the carpet is on our wish list, depending on how the contingency budget in the referendum shakes out. But that's on our list, for example.
Yeah.
Carpet could be considered a trip risk, right? It's bad enough. It's not that bad.
Yeah.
And if we have something like that, we're gonna find the money in the regular budget.
No, for sure. It's, it's one of those things, if they're, if we've been patching something for four years versus just pay to replace it. It's the only thing to plan for.
Unfortunately, the state funding mechanism does not really encourage school districts to have a replacement reserve. You just, you're not rewarded for solid planning than every other business and household does.
Yeah.
Or other states too.
But this does need to be updated and approved each year.
So you need a motion to approve for this, so moved?
Yes.
So Jeff made the motion. Lance, second. Any more discussion?
It was close.
Alright, all in favor? Post? Motion carries. Alright, so then we have consideration of the approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five CECL shared services contract.
So I, I don't know, Tim, if you wanna talk a little bit about it, but basically we're renewing all the services that we have had in prior years. Um, the summary worksheet, that's your exhibit, shows the different, you know, what it costs for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as it's estimated right now. And then what the anticipated cost will be for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So you can see overall where how much each classification is going up. The items that are under the blue highlighted titled, title are required services. So we have to subscribe to those three items. And then, of course, everything down below, we can choose to sus- subscribe to them or not. Um, but obviously that we've had them for years and, and continue to utilize all those services. Um, it looks like most of the stuff is going up between three and five percent. The only one that's going up a little bit more than that is right at the bottom with the environmental services. And this isn't technically part of the CECL eleven contract anymore. It has been and it was last year. So I thought I would leave it on there just to show that cost difference. But we did already sign that contract for the new rate. And Tim, if you can refresh my memory, was that because of the increased space or I'm trying to remember?
I have a quick question.
No.
Is this still a profit center for us?
A profit center.
Sid, is, is the CECL, uh, CECL eleven and all of our, uh, virtual, is that all tied together?
No, no, CECL is a regional network consortium of thirty-nine, CECL eleven, we're part of, and our, our G-DROPS.
So like the CECL classes don't have anything to do with the Virtual Academy?
Correct. Yeah, it used to be ITV Network was doing them, those, yeah. But no, they're just a cooperative agency that's meant to really save districts' money by combining resources. That's, they just did it. Um, yes, the CECL ten, Environmental Services, um, so it's CECL eleven, but we work with CECL ten because this is their specialty. Each CECL kinda has their niche. Um, CECL eleven's more.
Head start?
Yeah, head start and then even the, um, professional development, they're above and beyond. But, um, we've used them pretty much every year, but, uh, whenever we have, um, some remodeling or whatever, asbestos testing, you know, the radon testing, um, what else? Uh, all the chemicals, they make sure that these chemicals we store in chemistry and are stored properly in those audits, et cetera. But to answer your question, Jen, no, when I asked him that, I said, well, we're adding, I can't remember the, tens of thousands of additional square footage, right? Cause it's based on the size of the buildings. He said, no, you've been a great partner. We're not gonna raise, we're not gonna add that on. This was just, um,
Okay.
I guess.
Go down into the weeds just a little bit more. What, I mean, you can read all the things that, that they're supposed to help with on the contract. Is it worthwhile, I guess, long?
Yes, definitely. So, you know, Jeff, yeah, if you were,
I don't, not for us, but let's say we needed an occupational therapist one day a week, well, we wouldn't even be able to hire one. Right. So they'll hire one and they may go to four or five different school districts. And we just pay our pro-rata share of that person's work.
Okay.
And so they're providing in the direct services, they're providing staff.
Like in labor, in, in a labor term, they'd be like a union hall.
And then they do a lot of professional development.
Like she provided service.
Yeah, Dee used to be one of the consultants. Um, but yeah, Jeff's on the board. How many member board is it? Nine of us. Nine, I believe, out of the thirty-nine. We've been lucky to have one from our district, uh, Howard previously and then you. Um, but yeah, uh, we look at these closely every, every year and then we get a nice report of saying, did we use these services? You know, you pay a service and you get a, you get a discount, right? If you send your staff and your member of the consortium for these services. But for example, just off the top of my head, I go to the, um, the superintendent network meeting, um, PAC is called, uh, Professional Advisory Committee every month. Um, and that, that networking is super valuable. And the same holds true for our district assessment coordinator, indeed, and our curriculum coordinator, Dee, the special ed, and, you know, director in Leah, on those principal networks. And then all of our teachers use these things under ISPD, structured support, professional development. A lot of the things of Simotech, we, we use, science, math, technology, resource center. You know, you can't get these, you, you couldn't get a person to come in and, and, and do a professional development for five thousand dollars. Yet we're spending five thousand dollars for multiple educators to be able to get access to their resources and, and their curriculum libraries, but also go to their trainings and such. So, yeah, and, and to answer your question, absolutely.
Super responsive, they meet monthly with the soups, not, not all thirty-nine come, but a big, high percentage of them do. And so that's, the school districts are their customer. They're, have no taxing authority. So if school districts don't subscribe and use the services, then they.
And we have, we've dropped things over the years, you know, ITV was a great example. But they help us, um, with a number of things. E-Rate Services is a big grant that we get, um, for technology, to buy a lot of technology. Chad honestly loves it. Um, but they help us write that grant every year, right? Just one less administrative thing that Chad has to do.
So I'm kind of a broken record at CECL because, you know, in all of the legislative push, they're trying to squeeze money out of education. I don't remember if it's the average or the median school district has only five hundred students. So the average district is smaller than some of our buildings. And yet they have a superintendent, they have a business manager. And so I'm suggesting to CECL that you need to offer those services. So you don't, cause the state's gonna say, we're gonna merge school districts and we'll lose school boards. And we're gonna lose the local contact with each of these communities. Where if, you know, one soup represented three or four school districts and you had, they already do business manager for a number of districts. You collapsing school districts, consolidating school districts, wouldn't be that big a savings. Cause you are, and that's where I've been pushing CECL to explore that, but the schools are resistant, like we don't wanna give up our superintendent, we don't wanna give up our business manager. But I'm telling you, if the state is going to do it, um, what's his name, Shannon? He, when I talked to him ad nauseam last year, he brought it up. And he says, not this year, but that's on the agenda. And then they had a, they had a blue ribbon committee on shared services among school district. Quickly morphed into what it would look like if we just had fewer school districts. And the legislature doesn't like local control. They don't, they do not have school boards. Cause they don't get to tell us what to do. We can have, we have independent authorities. So if there's, the more power they have, the more they like it. So it's a ying and a yang, but the CECLs are really, CECL eleven is really good. And we've been for a long time. Not, I mean, I've been on board a couple of years, but um, it's really a good leadership. And I think it really provides good services and is recognized. I don't remember if there's twelve or thirteen CSIS, but um, really recognized around the state as one of the leading CSIS.
How much is the E-rate grant for?
I have no idea.
You know off the top of your head, Jen?
It reimburses, I think it's forty percent of the cost of the project. So it, depending on if the project is a hundred thousand, then we get forty thousand back in E-rate.
Yeah, what are some of our recent expenditures on that? I know the um, mobile hotspots during COVID were a big expenditure. Uh, some of the telephone, I think, um, occurring expenses, um, some of the Chromebook expenses. I don't remember what Chad submits every.
That's a lot of it. And then over the past couple of years with the COVID funding, we've had something called ECF funding. Which is similar to E-rate, but it's more for those Chromebooks and those types of things. But that I believe is done, or this might be the last year that's being offered, cause it was COVID relief funding.
It's around a hundred thousand.
Similar.
We don't see it in our district, but CSIS eleven is the sponsor of Head Start in our area. And it's ten million dollar budget for Head Start. I don't know how many facilities they have and then that's two, three year olds.
Just federal.
And it's amazing when Biden said you have to be vaccinated and wear masks. We had, I don't know, thirty or forty Head Start teachers quit and we couldn't replace them. So you had a hundred, two hundred kids that are two and three years old that didn't have a teacher. And you know, next year they're gonna be four, I mean, you don't get that year back. And those are the most, so it's really an impactful thing. I think the CSIS budget's about twenty-five million, ten of which is uh, Head Start.
It's a good program.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to approve that and then if approved, Jeff needs to sign that. I haven't seen him.
Oh, I've seen it.
Are you signed it?
Yeah.
One of you.
What's your thoughts?
You wanna stay quiet over there? Just listen.
All right. So I need a motion.
I'll make a motion. Okay.
All right. So Dave made the motion. Jeff second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
I am.
Okay, motion carries. Thanks for joining, Jen. Enjoy the rest of your content.
Have a great night.
Yep, thanks, Jen.
Bye.
All right. Now we move on to second readings of the board policies. We've got B through N, which are second readings.
Nothing's changed in any of these?
No.
Move to approve core gen items, D through N.
Great. Lance made the motion. Dave second. Is there any discussion?
Little things we should have, we have to read each one before we approve it.
We even, we try.
I don't know that.
Howard. And the six hundreds are obviously the financial part and Jen had a lot to, to do with.
Uh, so no more discussion, uh, all in favor?
Thank you.
Post, motion carries. Then we have consideration of the first readings of O through Y. And that's.
So O and P to FY, you know, you see you jumped in there at four hundred just because AI, right? Now AI has to be addressed. So we worked the land department um, to draft uh, that first reading. And it's grouped in there with um, I think near plagiarism. It's in that same vein.
Yeah.
So this isn't a policy from WASBA?
It is not. So this.
We drafted this one.
It approved by.
Yeah.
Well, they, they drafted it, but they also, you know, borrowed it from other school districts' policies. Nothing that we do is cheap quarterly from.
We use AI.
That's what I want. Okay. Uh, so then we can move on to future agenda items. I don't have anything. Anybody else? So then the upcoming dates, April fourth, the joint at VOC meeting at CSIS eleven internally at six thirty.
I think the speaker's a demographer.
Correct.
Should be really interesting.
So it's very interesting.
Yeah, can you uh, enlighten me what a demographer is?
Oh, demographics. They do body counts.
Well, I'm just a teacher.
How many people are expected to immigrate or em- ex?
Oh, really?
Well, however, it affects the, the financial landscape, right? The number of um, um. One of the retirees, what's not Gen X, but the uh, number of.
Baby boomers.
Baby boomers, yeah, bring for, baby boomers, right? A number and, and, and demographics for population and who's in the workforce and immigration and how all that plays into finance, really. And our state economy.
Numbers is pretty interesting.
And, and I'm one of numbers guy, but it's interesting.
Like one of the, you know, Catherine's a new doctor, but they're only creating one new family practice doctor for every hundred that is retired in the state. Each year.
Did we already have to respond if we're gonna go to that?
Yeah.
I have to register tomorrow.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll go to it. CSIS eleven still is obviously a little. I wasn't sure if it was tied directly to the virtual school or what.
Don't check it out. Well, you have.
So I have Dave, Erica, Tim, Jeff and Derek.
Gavin's there too, so.
You go? All right. No, we're good. So thank you.
I'm ready to see your smile.
How do they don't stream those?
It's a secret. CSIS eleven wants to keep their business quiet.
They have amazing meals.
They do.
Oh, really? Yeah, I'm in. Like Sandy, everybody's talking about how amazing it is. Our kids love lunch. Keep in mind, like, that's the first meal some kids get.
Yeah.
Lunch ladies are special. The board meeting.
Okay, that's fair. That sealed it for Derek.
He's going to every.
Dinner?
Dinner?
I'm in.
I'm in.
My schedule opened up.
Oh, yeah.
Less, it's still taxi season, so it'll be better than the crap I'm cooking.
April seventeenth is a school board meeting at seven with a five thirty tour. We'll meet at the high school.
Let me post it separate posting for the five thirty.
Will you send an invite for that five thirty thing?
Yeah, it'll be one of Erica's seventeen text messages.
The only way I can get him here. I just know that. I resigned, but it's fine.
You're good at it.
Thanks. Uh, April twenty eighth, uh, our board development meeting is at five o'clock here at the district office at Sunday, five o'clock.
You need us to get our menu items in now or?
No. I'll remind you.
Bite that.
Last time I think we just did pizza. That was simple. Perbonies, definitely.
Yeah. That was good.
Yeah. Like, why do that again?
Some pencil that in. Yeah. Would you guys wanna do pizza or cheap dandy?
Either way, it's all gonna, yeah, feel the same.
What?
What? It just sits there, so it's like, you'll have it.
Oh, and before I come.
Last time they brought the butter and.
Okay. So I think that's it. Uh, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is that a power play?
Yeah.
Is that a power play?
I'll second that.
That goes in the record. Thanks for coming, guys.
Again, Dave. All right. All in favor?
I am.
Here's that eight twenty.
I'm a Russell off after that one.
Russell off or?